All right, six o'clock, the prize for the pledge. Like we do to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all. Go ahead, we'll read our mission statement in partnership with the communities. The mission of the Dorfson and Palm School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, like long-term members. Is there any changes to the agenda? All right. All board members are present. Let's see, so no changes to the agenda, we have a motion to approve. Motion by your co-host, Eric. Second, five, or, all those, favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, 5.1, public comments, we do not have any comments tonight. 5.2, verbal recognition, anybody have anything to happen with kids that we know about? Oh, that's right, yeah.
We had at least a couple of kids.
Yep, so Josh Finseth qualified in four events. He won, won the long jump, came in second in the triple jump. And then he was in the 400 and the 100 and didn't win those, but he single-handedly has the ability to win a state track meet by himself. When you look at him. Yeah, yeah, it's amazing. And then Justin Wang also. And then on the girls' side.
Lexi.
Rinnecker.
Rinnecker.
Oswald, Alyssa Oswald.
Kristin Nelson.
And Kristin Nelson, yep. Yep.
Awesome.
So it was a, yeah.
I've never heard that before.
Yep. And then we have one qualify for sections in golf, Olivia Boyd.
Okay.
No males in golf, and then baseball and softball, we kind of had early, earlier than usual exits and that, but we're still here.
Awesome. So you had a good play go.
Um, yeah, it was excellent, well-ended. Yeah, we were surprised because it was kind of a tough time of the year right in last, last day of school and then a couple nights thereafter. Yeah, they did a great job, and it was kind of their one song, getting that already graduated.
I was just gonna say that little school kids that went to PC were all very young age.
Every time you get there.
Wait, did you take your gun with you?
I was in the bag, so I didn't get to, I was flying solo in DC. But, no, it was, it was really good, and my classroom, the teachers did a really nice job of connecting with, uh, world classrooms and getting all that stuff prepared and rallying the kids when it was a long day and a long travel and all of those things. So I thought it was a great trip.
Yeah, I concur. And it was educational to them, I mean, the kids got a lot of things out of it, so it was nice. I got some.
The tour guides that we had were phenomenal and were great about giving the information prior to going to the monuments and the memorials and reminding them why it's really important. And if they were at all like disrespectful or like making fun of something, they circled back educationally instead of reprimanding them, just did a really nice job of reminding them of why we wouldn't do that and why we would choose other choices. So I thought that was kind of neat to see. Um, I expected our guy to kind of hammer some one choice behavior and he goes, no, this is why we wouldn't do that. And then that kid was great for the rest of the time, so it was fantastic.
That wasn't with a hat.
No.
No, it was like literally the best travel touring weather you could have.
Yeah, it was over 70s, low 80s.
No rain, sunshine, nobody, I didn't see any major sunburns or anything, so. That's awesome. Wonderful. Well, we have two administrators we want to recognize tonight. Katie Pitcher, this is your last meeting with us, and thank you for everything you've done for our little school kids and hillbillies, but we'll see you again.
Thank you guys for everything over the years.
Yeah, we appreciate you. And then Superintendent Tigerson, this is your last meeting tonight. After 10 years, so congratulations and enjoy retirement and, I mean, you're gonna be having a daily cooking, your wife will make you cook.
Yeah, she surprised me last week.
So congratulations to both of you, and you're retiring and you're moving on, but we appreciate you, so. All right, well, let's move on to, we have 6.1, the DGS Elementary Course. Um, Marvole handed us all a sheet for her and Joe to talk about, which I had and now I've lost.
Can you stand right here?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, just talk, they'll hear you.
All right, so we have lots to report on tonight, just to kind of recap of what's been going on for the summer so far. We're gonna start with summer rebel success, so this is something that we had discussed and talked about and received funds to pursue kind of the expansion of the, the targeted services program for summer. And it has been phenomenal, it has been so cool to see the kids coming here to Dilworth. Um, it's, it's been awesome, the teachers have been phenomenal, we've had teachers that have stepped up to sub. Um, it's just, it's just been really, really fun. Um, we're also able to provide EL services this summer as well. We had, we hired Jenna Polly to kind of fill in some of those gaps as well. Um, kiddos got to qualify by utilizing the STAR data that we had in spring, um, as well as teacher recommendations after we looked through the kiddos that qualify with our qualifying scores. Uh, we sent emails to all of our teachers and said, if you want somebody to qualify, or if you want somebody to attend, give their parents a call, see if they want to. And we have got some kiddos that way too. Um, they, each of the teachers have all their STAR assessments, reading and math that we distributed to them, so they're utilizing that data to see where the holes are. And they're able to do the differentiated groups and those types of things utilizing that data for the, for the summer school program. Um, we had a move all session, sure, we talked about it at Glendon for a change, but since we don't even have electricity half the time, it was probably not the best, so we moved it here. Um, and then session one ended, uh, it was from June 8th to June 24th. It, 55 learners consistently attended, um, and then 10 or more that halfway attended. Um, and then session two will start July 12th through, um, July 29th, and that's plotted for right now 78 kiddos to attend. I know I've had some interest, I have people calling off the hook saying, I've heard how fun this is, I've heard how awesome this is, we want to sign up, which makes my heart really happy because it's just such a cool thing. Um, we're still looking for a teacher to cover fourth grade for the July sessions. I sent an email to both Dilworth and Glendon teachers and staff today for interest. Um, like I said, the teachers have done amazing jobs subbing for summer rebel success teachers who needed. The feedback we're getting from parents is impeccable and the teachers are doing a stellar job. Um, and the hope is to sustain. The hope is to prove that, you know, utilizing the data from the beginning to the end, that those six weeks of those interventions and that togetherness actually tops themselves up. So hopefully we can continue this down the road.
And we're sitting all right on the staffing, we hired one kindergarten teacher for the Glendon Felton Elementary Site. We hired one kindergarten teacher for the Dilworth Elementary Site. And a first grade teacher at the Dilworth Elementary Site will be sitting with four certified teachers for our interventionist program. And as of now, the pair of positions and special ed positions are all filled at the site, so we're sitting.
All pair positions, that's correct?
At the elementary, middle school, middle school I think has two and high school has two. We did hire, I did hire one, they had the last week, I think, for offer the position.
And then for kindergarten, we're, we're at five sections at the Dilworth Elementary and two sections at Glendon Felton Elementary. Well, in the next month, we'll look and see what numbers do, that we might have to play around and even some things out. Uh, so we'll kind of within the next couple of weeks, see if anything comes in, but put a plan in place and have to contact some families and say, you know, we're gonna have to move you to a different site just to keep things. But, but healthy kindergarten number-wise, we're, we're pretty healthy, so that's another good sign.
Uh, curriculum order, I just wanted to give you an update, all math consumables are ordered for next year. I got that done, and then the handwriting, learning without tears, um, that's all completed as well. Um, and Joel and myself and Jake will be meeting, um, it's supposed to be, yeah, tomorrow, but it will be next Thursday, Wednesday? I don't know, July 7th, whatever date that is. Um, to look at the different apps that we've been doing, um, some PD with Jake regarding Clever. It's a, it's a way we can monitor, we can push up and monitor the apps that are being used by kiddos and, and teachers in the school. And it's super sweet because we can, we can pull up like how many kids use this, how much time. And then each company, the curriculum companies actually have an app available for pushouts that we, that we use. Um, so that's gonna be a way that when we get our new, um, technology that Joel talked about in a second, that we'll be able to ensure that it's being utilized with our district curriculum.
New devices, we're able to get 140 samples for the second grade, 100 for first and 55 for kindergarten, now for first and kindergarten. That doesn't cover every student, we're aware of that, but it covers it enough where, get your feet wet, you know, especially at the kindergarten level, it's like, will we use it? It'll be kind of a traveling cart where, I'd say more than just a weekly basis of, hey, we're gonna use it and just see, you know, what kind of lights a fire in a kindergarten teacher, the first grade, what they really like, and then we can move from there. Same thing with the carts and the professional development that will kind of go along with it.
And that Clever too will also show the data that we, like if we want to say order more computers for kindergarten, that Clever will have the data that this is being used, but how many people for this amount of time. So it's that data we kind of talked about, um, in, or when we, when we talked about ordering these things, so that's kind of a cool thing. Um, a couple MDE updates, three well-by-third grade has been submitted, and what that is, is a plan that goes to MDE every year um, that shows them our kindergarten first, second and third grade students and how they've done on their STAR assessment um, for first, second and third, early lit for kindergarten, and then their, um, SARS and MCA for, uh, for, um, reading. Um, it was actually, I was, I was a little nervous doing, learning the numbers. We actually did extremely well this year, just, you know, despite all of, like, all of the COVID chaos. Um, there was, there weren't any major red flags, I could let our kiddos did an amazing job, and our teachers did a stellar job of getting them prepared and ready to vote. So our data is not, it's not, it's not wretched, like it's, it was really surprisingly good. Um, you know, when we think about losing time and, and the scattering of things for COVID, it was awesome, it was awesome to see that. And again, that's just the state likes to see that, they take our goals and those things, so that's been reported. And then DERS, um, DERS is the discipline, um, report for the elementaries and the high school and the middle school. Both of us have submitted, um, uh, that to MDE as well.
Did you get that kicked back or not? Are we good this time? I mean, simple things if you, which I found out that everything was fine, the batch actually uploaded and no issues, and then you forgot to click something in the school, it kicks it out and you're like, great.
I'll find that, right, sure.
Yeah, hopefully that's done for, good.
Otherwise you'll have to leave.
Like I mentioned, construction updates, some more, we're four cubbies short, if you look at kind of the future. Uh, ECFE, the cubbies from the other site wouldn't match, you know, there's gonna be some, we have to retro tips and things, but we think we can make it look pretty nice and we can make it inset so it's not sticking out. Um, looking with the maintenance department and Dennis, so we've kind of got a plan in place. But we will need to order four more, make it complete. Uh, however, that's something that we can do this year rather than right now, because the reality is first grade's still gonna be down there. So they can have loggers instead of the cubbies, so we've got some time on that. Uh, safe return to plan, survey sent out, requirement from MDE, um, I guess the biggest fear, many returning is, you know, hoping that everything stays as it is and we don't get any surprises coming into the fall. I think that's kind of the consensus with the area schools of, it's been nice not wearing the mask. You know, hopefully we can continue, that's what we're gonna, I don't know what will happen there. Then the elementary handbook, that's, you know, you always kind of keep an eye on that, there's really not a whole lot of changes. Understanding if we get free meals again for one more year. And it's just gonna be the cooperation piece of free and reduced filling that out. It's a lot of people don't bother because they're already getting free and reduced, and it would be nice if we can somehow, put a carrot on the end of the stick and get some of those forms rolling in, what kind of help our district out.
All right, I've been chomping at the bit, bit to get our title, um, we haven't even been allotted anyone yet, so I like to report and tell you how much we've gotten, but it's not even coming through online on the service report yet, so I don't have a lot about that. Um, and then our site leadership teams will resume, um, meeting in July, we usually give, um, June for that reprieve time. Um, so for the 21, 22 yearly plan, I'm doing it very similar to what we did, um, last year, with meeting with both sites. Um, and one thing that I forgot to do on here, I got Cindy Cooney on the Friday, Friday afternoon, um, looking at doing some descriptors for the Esser money that we've received for our 150 and 1, uh, 150, 151, 160, all of that jazz. So that is well in tow, $500,000 worth, so. All right, do you have any questions for us?
I just have a question, are these pair positions that were filled, does that count for non-certified staff that we approved for an interventionist as well?
That actually, we tabled, um, hiring for that because we were able to put another certified staff person in that position, and we haven't gotten very many applicants whatsoever. Yep, good question, thank you, thank you for asking. But it's exciting, we'll be able to have two, two full-time certified.
Thank you guys.
Yep, thank you.
All right, 6.2, board committee reports. I think the only one is fiscal personnel, and unfortunately I hope they will be there last night, but Ronnie and David and Brian Metz, so David can give us a little update.
Sure. So the first thing we talked about was litigation and the conclusion of litigation. So currently we're working to negotiate, um, there's been some back and forth between, uh, unions, the union's attorney and our attorney, try to come up with a solution, um, for amounts paid during that time. And so we're waiting to get some information, I think, back from the union, and we'll see what that looks like. It sounds like, well, the dollar's really not that terribly far apart, but. In any case, that was slated to, we should have an update, I think, maybe this Friday or something, I think, the end of this week. Someone will have to. We talked about the budget, but I'll leave that running. Just, it's difficult at this point in time to say, just because the state is, uh, we're still waiting to hear what kind of increase education's gonna give from the state. And so it's a bit of a guess, um, we have to ask for our obligation to have budget, so, um, we'll do the best we can at this point in time. Um, revenue projections, I think it's probably been pretty conservative in that regard. And, um, just, we still have some questions on Esser money and that for, so. Um, the next thing we talked about is the land, the potential, looking at St. Elizabeth and, um, Brian Metz, and really the dollar amounts they're talking about are far more than what we've talked about in terms of spending. And so it's just not really, something that's not gonna pan out in the short term, but, you know, hard to say what's happening in the future, so. We're just kind of tailing that. The other thing we talked about was the, um, potential for garage in Dilworth. And it makes sense probably to hold back on that until, um, future time when we see if it can pan out with space that we have in Glendon and, potential availability for other areas here in Dilworth too. So I think it makes sense to, the thing we need to do as a board is to let the contractors know what we're planning on doing, and so that they can move to, um, start working on that, on that project, so.
Yeah, I think we needed to know by July 4th. You know, what we wanted to do as far as put something on there or not, so. Did the church come back with a solid, like a solid asking price, or were they still kind of wishy-washy?
No, they, they came back, uh, they, they talked to relatives, or two A relatives, um, developed it. And in their mind, um, they're thinking, hoping, and what else not, that thoughts can go for $40,000 to a lot. So they're talking about $80,000 and, and so I had a conversation with Frank first and, and, um, then I had a follow-up conversation with Sean, and he was one of the finance person. And, you know, we, we just agreed that we're too far apart, it's not even realistic. Um, so, you know, last time we talked more about the fact of, we know we're gonna need parking. The building itself doesn't have to be put up as far as storage and all that yet, so, and we need the parking. So we can get the lot, let's just get the lot done, we need to let, um, a person who's occupied the house know that, hey, you have to be out by the end of July. And, and he's been jumping, he's, he's texted me a number of times, and I said, you know, we're trying to work on final plans with the church, whatever, make a movement on that. So, um, I'll give him a follow-up tonight afterwards, but, and then, uh, I'll give Lee, um, call him tomorrow and just tell him, hey, look, this is, we need to fill a lot, uh, no building on it. And so after, um, you know, it sounds most likely that we're not probably gonna be able to do the controlled burn. Uh, I'm pretty much too thrilled about that. So most likely, uh, it's a matter of demolishing and, and what else not, but, you know, the pad itself, taking them a couple of weeks, so. So the good thing is we can have the data done before we workshop these.
I think our feeling was that we needed spaces, so we'd rather take the whole thing for parking and look at other spots down the road. Maybe something happens with the church down the road, or maybe we were up on their other parking lot or something, you know, down the road, so.
No, I mean, I, I grew up on those streets, and if they can get that for those lots, who goes to the, that's great.
If they do, if they can, I want to sell my house to the same person.
Um, the last thing we talked about, the Affordable Care Act. Um, one of the issues with the Affordable Care Act is to make sure that you're paying appropriate amounts for healthcare for your employees. We look like we're okay, but the Affordable Care Act is very complicated. Uh, and so Ron just wanted to give us a heads up, she thinks we're okay this year, but, um, something we just have to keep a watch on. And I think that's it.
All right, any other committees need? All right, 6.3, Superintendent Report, how many minutes we're gonna give you, three, five?
No, we don't need much time, because really it's, it all comes down to, you know, for, for me, it's, I'm trying to go through the checklist. Uh, okay, is this set up, is this set up, uh, you know, going through it with Shannon today, just, uh, you know, I'm sure there'll be things come up, we went through all the files and, and what else not, and, and, you know, phone call away in about three minutes, wait for you, so it's not that big of a deal. Uh, you know, the Affordable Care Act was, I also had a conversation with Tamara Jones, who's the head of MSEA, um, just to make sure that she's aware that, you know, we're monitoring that. Um, because of course, with the non-certified union, we're in the middle of that contract. So we're monitoring that, that looks like we'll be fine on, on both certified and non-certified. Um, I'll go through the budget when we get to that action item. Um, I, um, I got a meeting tomorrow morning, uh, with Brandon, just so you can talk about the boundary thing. I'll get ahold of, um, Clay County, and just to meet with Mark Sloan. Um, and Shannon has one that we have, Mark Sloan works at the G I, uh, uh, GIS at the Clay County. And he's the one that typically is able to, uh, tell us whether we have enough, um, increase in the profit, get more, I've got, go get another transfer. And so that's part of the meeting tomorrow with Brandon is just, are there any things that could be done between two school districts to brush this? And we've talked about that before, and, uh, otherwise he's just gonna show me a quick update and then, uh, get a meeting, uh, set up. Shannon and board members can sit down between the two school districts as they're looking at how to, uh, uh, distribute the, uh, you know, some of the expenses associated with, and how will that look at the long-term point? And, uh, you know, some of the conversations that did take place with Clay County, um, once all this Esser III shakes out, because Doc and Frank, uh, as the county commissioner, they still haven't, um, you know, they don't know how they're gonna be able to utilize the funds then. It seems like that would be a perfect niche for Clay County to be able to contribute into it. So it's a lot of those things that I'm trying to make sure that, um, from my end, uh, that I can, um, either make sure we get some closures and continuums more than we would, so don't leave anything on the, on the table. Um, you know, we, uh, as far as the, the numbers with the EDMs and, and all that, uh, we had a discussion a little bit last night about the fact that, uh, you know, looking at those kindergarten numbers, knowing that there will have to be the potential, uh, you know, we haven't even hit July yet. And typically enrollment-wise with the primary students, there's a lot of open enrollments that typically come in July. And with already having 93 at the Dilworth site, you know, if it's five classrooms that are available, um, you know, you're gonna hit limits pretty quick. Um, and, you know, there's a couple of policies that have to be addressed in July. And Brooke is well at speed on that, Shannon's up to speed on it, it's your open enrollment. Because once they come out with what the dollar model is, then that out-of-state open enrollment policy has to be updated. And then the other one is the open enrollment lottery process. Um, so whatever you're gonna use, whether you're gonna go to a cap of 150 or 140 students by grade or the amount per section, because we had it both ways. So it's just some of those things that need to be talked about as well. That's all I got.
You did.
I'm gonna go with this one.
It's time to be done.
All right, thank you, Brian. Um, consent agenda, claims and accounts for, oh, what is this? Oh, I'm jumping stuff, sorry Ronnie. I've always got a game to go to, that's my way. Working game. Um, 7.1, uh, we're looking at our due 14 things. Much my David, is there a second? Second, Nicole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Now the consent agenda, 8.1, claims and accounts for. All right, we also have in your packet, our treasures report and plan report, we have the Minnesota liquid asset and max account. We also have the activity accounts report, extracurricular, uh, proof of following extracurricular, Sage Man, Josh Argar, Bella Voice, um, Matt Andreessen and Kirk Adams Singers, Matt Andreessen, resignation of Sally Lundy, sign language interpreter effective the end of this 2020, 2021 school year. Do we have a motion? So, motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Laura, any discussion or questions? Any no discussion or questions, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This is fine interpreter, is that one, we haven't had time signing somebody for, or not?
Mary Ann's gonna be tomorrow for the ASL position, then you can be the sign language interpreter. I think it's tomorrow or the next day.
All right, new and unfinished business, 9.1, depository. Um, this is the motion as designation of Northwestern Bank of Dilworth, MSDLEF and MSDMAX, official depositaries for the 2021, 22 school year, real mention. Motion by Ronnie, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions? Does this rotate every so often, or is this?
We haven't for quite a while, a year ago we did, but, uh.
It's stayed the same, just for uncomplicated things. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.2, this is a motion, um, to set the district white impress fund at a replenishable maximum of $6,000 effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2020, 2022, and authors Marcus, Ask, Ask Fagan, for Belka and Shannon to decide an issue checks is our motion. So, motion by Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, any questions?
This is Lucas, the guy that we had last.
Yes, yes, he is the journalist from Greenie Works that would be in our building.
Okay, good to be here.
All right, any more questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3, this is a motion for a paid cash fund at a replenishable maximum of $100 effective July 1st. Nine point three, this is a motion for a paid cash fund or replenishable maximum of a hundred dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and authorized Marcus Asfig for the young and Brooke Belka at the Delaware site to dis- disperse funds from that account upon receiving appropriate documentation or expenditures by employees of the district. Brooke Belka Delaware site will be named caretaker of the paid cash fund. Is there a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion? Any question or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point four, investments. This is a motion to authorize the treasurer or Shannon Hunstead superintendent of schools to invest school district cash pursuant to board policy effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, real motion. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion? Any question or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point five, this is our FY twenty-two budget, um, I'm gonna let Brian, uh, speak about this before we grab a motion and a second, so, go ahead, Brian.
So, both nine point five and nine point six, um, over the years, they required having minutes on the L T F M, and that's, is a setup, just in case there needs to be anything else. It's the only reason about this. Ten-year plan is not ready yet, uh, it's, it can't be ready until we get all the information from, um, from the state. Uh, but it's the L T F M budget basically that you're putting. Um, so, when, when you look at the one-page sheet and I asked David and Ronnie whether I should give out all the other sheets that we went through and they were both in agreement, but, but just don't want to waste the time with us. Um, the, uh, the revenue projection model is, is what we utilize to, uh, try to get a good prediction on how much revenue we're gonna have coming in. The, the distribution, which is not all based on equalization, um, uh, formulas. And so, you, you can't, you can't get the real accurate, uh, distribution until they come out with the new one after legislation, which is not the session. Um, because that will have the newest numbers. Currently, this budget had to be created from the March twenty-second version of the revenue projection model, which was before the session's even done. So, that's what it is, uh, Shannon and I were kinda comparing a little bit, I mean, you're, you're kind of, uh, I don't wanna say you're flying by the seat of pants, because you can take the existing amount and just transfer it over to new numbers. So, that's what the estimates, uh, that are in the revenue projection model utilize. Um, because we knew that, uh, the state, uh, the early reports are the two point four or five percent increase on, uh, the, uh, the basic, uh, fund, uh, funding stream. Um, I put that into the formula and that's where these new numbers come. Uh, I then asked Cindy to update all of the categoricals. So when you look at this, and to give you an idea of how, um, how much, um, influx some of this stuff is, last night when we went through this, the general fund total was showing about five hundred and some thousand dollars in the rep. So, we made up two hundred thousand today overnight. It's, and it's because, when you look at like the S R, and that's actually S R two funds that, um, worked through with the budget, has signed off on this already, um, but, you know, the revenue's showing five hundred eighty-nine thousand, expenditures five hundred eighty-nine. Last night when we were going through it, the things that were put in on the expenditures have not been pulled out of the regular categories. So, if they were doubled up on the expenditure side. Uh, the point being, again, the numbers are conservative on the revenue. You've seen this, but we try to, uh, go as cautious as we can with, uh, with what the pupil units are. On the expenditure side, um, like the capital, some of these are still showing the full amount that we have in revenue. A pretty good chance we're not gonna spend all of our capital points, of what we got coming in for revenue. So, we get three hundred thousand dollars, I, I don't know if I'm saying weak. I'm pretty sure you guys are not gonna be spending all three hundred thousand. The reason I say that is because some of that capital that we have that's in the budget, like with the technology, some of that may end up coming out of federal funds, because there's another funding stream specifically for federal for technology. If that happens, it'll come out of the new funds, we'll have more revenue coming in and you'll have more buildup in your reserves for capital. So, there's a lot of things in flux on this thing. So I would not, you know, I'm not gonna tell you, you're gonna be three hundred thousand in the whole body by next June. I'm sure, um, between Shannon and Brady Marks and everybody, this thing will come out. It should come out pretty close in the end, depending upon what happens with your numbers. You know, you never know some of that stuff until the kids get back from the fall. Um, you know, the, the executive orders are scheduled to be done in August. Um, you know, what may happen, uh, you know, will it be local control? You know, Brandon and I were having that discussion for a good hour yesterday. Uh, nobody knows yet, because right now the latest report is Minnesota Department of Health is gonna be coming out with guidelines, but we just don't know what authority that's gonna be. So is it gonna be here, is it guidelines like we have typically, um, when you have lice and things like that, you guidelines work with. But it's not like what executive orders were, you must do all the following things. Uh, you may have local control over, over whether you require masks. And pretty good chance, even if there is an outbreak, you may have local control over quarantines. That's gonna be a biggie, you know, are you going to have to go by the particular quarantine? And will you, will that have a ripple effect for some families regarding some people wanting to do homeschooling? Because remember, they didn't get in legislation for the distance. That's not in the legislation, so that isn't one of the requirements. So when people call and say, we'd like to have our kids on distance, school districts may choose not to have distance. You may not even have the option, because if it's, what isn't in the bill and in the legislation, unless you are a certified, uh, distance school district, you know, like Fergus and some of the other ones, unless you have that, you can't provide it. So then their only option would be if they wanna do homeschooling, which then will affect your pupil units. So that's all in flux, yeah, and, um, there's no crystal ball that I would want to say at this point in time what's gonna happen with that. So, that's why I want the revenue to be very conservative with the numbers, with people, so you don't have to price. I don't think Shannon would want, you know, leave with big numbers there, and what did you do, Shannon? So anyway, again, this is kind of a, uh, you, you gotta have a budget in place to start the year. Um, you know, a lot of these things are, uh, simply taking, we've built in on the expenditure side a particular percent for inflation and what else, that's built in to the budget and trying to keep it pretty, uh, uh, conservative on the rolling side. Anything you guys wanna add from what I, that you picked up in all those lovely sheets I gave you last night?
I didn't spend all night looking through them.
You did?
I didn't.
Oh. Like I said, you know, once they come out with a new revenue projection model and you're sharing that, you guys are gonna end up, um, you know, having new totals in capital and everything else, because remember, it's gonna, some of that is not gonna change your amount of money, but it's gonna change the ratios of how much a state aid compared to, how much it might be, uh, because that'll all be based on your, uh, uh, N T C and your revenue market values. And those ratios all change every year based on what kind of wealth property we have.
All my years, this first one's always faced with a shot in the dark. It's about what boils down to. Especially when the legislators and governors, you have no idea what happened to them.
When you have these late sessions like this, I mean, you, you really are doing some guesswork. So, any, any questions? It's probably the shortest I've ever gotten on a budget.
All right.
I'll move you through.
Question by Ronnie. Second by Nicole. All right, uh, any further discussion or question? Where's the crystal ball when you, all right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I do. Uh, nine point six, long-term facility maintenance, ten-year plan, uh, do we have a motion? So, motion by Nicole, is there a second? I have a question, can I ask? Did we say we don't have this yet?
The, the, the ten-year plan has to be updated every year, the ten-year plan, so basically what you got is the, uh, in the budget, how much L T F M, revenues coming in, into the general, and then how much expenditures right now are being coded to L T F M. So, this'll go right into the ten-year plan when that comes out in later July. Exactly, exactly, because really, yeah, because really, the only thing that gets counted into the ten-year plan is the next year's numbers. So this is gonna provide those numbers.
Thank you. Is there, there's a, a motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by David, any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point seven, this is, um, a motion for the technology integration, integration agreement with the Lake's Country Service Center is presented, um, there is a contract that's in our packet, um, Lake's Country, as long as I've been on the school board, we've had a, um, contract with them and it's been a very, um, good, good working relationship with, uh, with them. I don't think anything's changed in the contract. They gave us, they, they gave us a discount, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Two, two seventy-eight-one based on the fact that we didn't have a full-time person, so, those, I think feels very fair.
It's a one-year, one now, or what?
It's two years.
It's three years.
Three years, it looks like FY twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. With the one-time credit of the thirty-two thousand, seven eighty-one that will be applied towards the FY twenty-two contract. All right, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Nine point eight, this is a certified contract for Jonathan Mark, elementary teacher. He will be a B A step one, this will be effective this year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, do you have a motion? So, motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Nicole, uh, which, which site, is this the Delaware site? John will be in for it. Yeah, Brandon, okay. All right, two, any other questions or discussion?
We have another. Yep.
And he was, he was actually our, what, long-term sub?
Oh, it's Mr. Mark.
Mr. Mark, yeah. Yeah, so he's, he's quite familiar and the kids just adore him and he's great with all the little things and things too, so. Was a, that was a good hire.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Can I ask them, you know, kind of related question, are we planning to hire a, like a long-term, like a sub for the year, because was, was he not like he was, like a business house sub?
We had not talked about that with Shannon.
You know, we did, yeah, we did it last year because of COVID, just the lock, a boat in. So, yeah, we'll have to have a discussion if we wanna do that again. Absolutely, great question.
It, it probably won't be, yeah, it'd be monthly, well, it won't be a long-term one, because otherwise you gotta, but what we got Shannon is a monthly rate, so the board can make changes of that, just like the daily rate. And then there's a monthly rate.
And so they're not concerned about the fourteen days and the fifteen days turning into a longer?
Exactly, because this way, they can go to whichever classroom you need.
Okay, so they're not in the same position consecutively.
And then the rate is somewhere between that long-term subway, actually I think it's like two hundred bucks. So it was trying to protect our,
Both sides.
Our, exactly, and our subs, more at M D G F, give that plus. It worked, it worked really well, because they, they stayed busy.
And based off our teacher and parent, if there wasn't either, right?
Yep.
I think, nine point nine, this is a certified contract for children, yeah, I'm gonna apologize, get out, is it get out?
Get out.
Get out. Elementary teacher, B A step five, effective this year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, do you have a motion? So, motion by Nicole, is there a second? Uh, second by Laura. All right, where is this teacher gonna be?
First grade door.
First grade door. Um, any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Nine point ten, certified contract for Amanda Ferlin Fine, did I say that right?
Ferlin Fine.
Ferlin Fine? It's like at work when I have to. You go over there and you say it too fast and they're like me, and I'm like, yes, you, you're the next student out, so I'm a crazy break, let them do it. All right, say that again.
Ferlin Fine?
Ferlin Fine, all right, Amanda Ferlin Fine, welcome to our school. Uh, B A step two, uh, do you have a motion? So, Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Where is this teacher gonna be located?
Fieldworth kindergarten.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Nine point eleven, uh, this is a certified contract for Nathan Beeling, music, and my step five, effective this year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I'm assuming this is announced. An elementary teacher.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, is there a motion?
No.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, um.
How are we doing on the total, higher than what we got, everybody?
Did we get the medical school special study? You know, get rid of that position and, and, so where's Kyra to get the location, that's right, it'll be done before we leave.
All right, okay, next board meeting, Monday, July twelfth. Um, uh, we're, we're gonna say it's gonna be in the high school media center, but Tracy's gonna let us know where it's gonna be at.
Day by day.
Day by day, so, we're gonna have a meeting on the Tuesday twelfth. It's gonna be at six o'clock, but we're going to let you know the day, like the Friday before, where we'll be at.
You do have great, it was up here.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy, I appreciate that. And then fiscal personnel will meet following the conclusion of the board meeting on the twelfth, so. Uh, anyway, all right, I think that's it. It is six forty-seven, this meeting is adjourned, I don't have my, boom, boom, there we go. All right, do you wanna grab the recording?
I am on vacation, but.
Oh, great, okay, no problem, thanks for letting me know. Enjoy, I hope you're going somewhere fabulous.
All of you that were there last, all day, it was very nice.
Glad that you enjoyed it.
Very appreciate it, I'm actually getting, uh, my wife dollars, maybe going out. Home base is one of the places.